I'll call this a regular workshop meeting of the city council order. And council, do you have a copy of your agenda, your proposed agenda at your place? Is there an entertaining motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions here in that all favor, signify with saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Next, you have the amendments from the September 2nd, 2025 workshop meeting, September 9th, 2025 special joint meeting, and September 16th, 2025 regular meeting, along with five consent items.
The approval of the amendments and consent items, that's presented?
Second. Any discussions here in that all favor, signify with saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. That brings us down to item number six, the Intergovernmental Support IGSA for the Lejeune Memorial Gardens.
Mayor, we have a couple of things we want to present here to the council. Intergovernmental Service Agreement with the memorial gar- or for the memorial gardens. It's something that we've been working on for a couple of years. If you recall, we've discussed it with council previously, and I think we've gotten it to a place where we're ready to have this item considered, so turn it over to-
Go ahead, look at the slide. Yeah, I'm gonna just start, there's one important thing, just some of this is old information to y'all, but, you know, there's one slide before this. And that one, that we are host city, and as a host city-
There we go.
As a host city, the responsibility to support our installations in their mission, and their primary mission, which is, the focus right now is launching the warfighters and recovering them, training and the quality of life and that. And we've been, of course, working with the base for years, you can go to the next slide, please. And, you know, the traditional methods that we've used are with memorandums of agreement and understanding. For some reason, it's- Okay. And those are agreements where we usually are trading services, you know, fire mutual aid, you know, using our radio frequencies and things like that. Of course, one of those MOAs establishes the Cooperative Planning Group, which is a thing that's relatively new and doesn't exist across all the military installations, and that's where the commander, the mayor, and the chairman of the county commission meet to discuss important things with base and the city. Of course, the NC MAC, mayor's an ex-official member, Dr. Washington is appointed as a commissioner, and we have our host, military host cities coalition with our other host cities Fayetteville, Havelock, Goldsboro, and Elizabeth City. But now, since 2013, when the Federal National Defense Authorization Act approved the use of intergovernmental support agreements, we've been working with the base with a new tool, you know, and, you know, we had our first agreement was a traffic signal agreement and that. And so now we're at a point where we're now going to talk about another agreement with the base to help them get, provide more efficient and effective services, and hopefully, if they're paying for them, it's gonna save them money, because they'll get them at a reduced price. We, of course, always participate in joint studies, we're getting ready to kick off an OLDCC funded, that's a Department of Defense agency that funds studies with community based interaction on resiliency. And there's three major areas that that study's gonna look at, and has to do with water, sewer, you know, and flooded roads and that. So this is an opportunity to hopefully get in some regional, real regional planning, and under those IGSA's, you know, the base can provide services as well as contract for services, so it works both ways. And so hopefully, with a study like that, it helps put in place some future actions that will benefit the region. And of course, a lot of this resiliency studies related on helping the base performance mission, because now, as we see with what's going on in Ukraine, you know, there's no safe area, even though the battlefield's in Ukraine, you're finding interruption all over the world to try and impact on how the battle goes. And that leads us into some of the exercise participation lately. We've been participating in base exercises having to do with trying to deploy the forces because there's gonna be interruption, because our utilities might be impacted by cyber attacks and things like that. So again, being a military host city is a very important mission. So with that background, you know, Terrell's gonna talk about this next specific IGSA that we're asking council to support.
Okay, good evening, Mayor. Council, this right here is just, really, just a overview or picture of one of our tax maps, just showing you the area. But what we're looking to do is, we will be taking over the landscaping and maintenance of the Lejeune Memorial Gardens with this IGSA. I think it's important to mention that we've already partnered with the base for some of our big events that occur. We have one coming up in a couple of weeks. May have to, with federal shutdown, we may be modified, but we've got the Beirut Memorial Event coming up in just a couple of weeks. So our director, Mike Licori and his staff, have been working with the base for several years now. But the cool thing about this agreement is, is that now we're gonna get paid for it. But it also expands the partnership that we have with the base. I guess my fingers are going a little, this is the slide I need to get to. So the services that we're providing, as you can see, we'll be policing the grounds. And we'll skip the second one on purpose, the mowing, leaf removal, pruning, pine straw, mulch, flower bed installs. But the bathrooms is very important because of, the bathrooms we're hoping are gonna come online sometime in early 2026. And as part of the Parks Department's routine maintenance, they're already doing those type of activities for our facilities, but they'll now be providing that for the Lejeune Gardens. So we're very excited about the opportunity to provide these services. I think it just enhances what we're already doing in other areas around the city. Cemetery is in close proximity and facilities that we're already maintaining. So to give you an idea of where our costs were, are for this project, for year one, our total cost, that's personnel, material, equipment, is $221,369.65. So that will be utilized, those funds, to offset our cost for providing those services to the base. And again, as Mr. Massey just stated, what we're finding out more and more is that it makes sense for the base, if the city is already providing, can provide those services and can do them in a more efficient and effective manner, it makes sense to partner with us to provide these types of services, not only assist the base, but it also assist our community. And there's an escalator in there. As you can see, the agreement is for five years. We'll prob- again, we'll probably evaluate how this agreement works as we go through the process, but I know that the Parks Department is ready to go. We have a tentative start date of October 14th, so it's coming up very quickly. And what we're asking, slide's got, we changed them, but it looks like they got mixed again. If there aren't any questions, what we're asking council to do this evening is to give authorization to the city manager to be able to execute the agreement with the base.
What, another museum is gonna have their own facility, they'll take care of their own bathrooms?
They have a lease on the land, which is different than all the other things that were built. All the other items were built on land that's really owned still by the Marine Corps, and the Marine Corps assumed total responsibility for that. In the case of the museum, they're actually gonna sign a lease, and they're totally responsible for everything inside that lease area.
Which would include some grounds?
Yes.
The Uggloven anchor and their own landscaping and so forth? What about parking, the parking areas there, who's got responsibility for that?
Well, we'll end up having to kind of trim around there, and we'll end up having to pick up the trash if there's trash in that. Generally, I've not seen a lot of trash dumped on the ground there and that, but we're gonna end up, you know, just like in our parks, we're gonna end up looking at the grounds and picking it up. And the biggest, I guess, downside would be with some of our retired Marines, you know, their standards are not the same standards that we follow today, you know, so we're gonna get some harassment. Things that might need to get picked up and-
There might be an opportunity for volunteers then.
Yes, no, that's, well, and fortunately, a lot of them do that, especially the ones that are tied to the individual memorials. They're out there doing all kinds of things because they know we can't take it care of the way it needs to be, right? And that, so that's fine, we just, we just have to learn how to deal with them. I mean, what this does is gives the base the chance to just call Michael and say, "Michael, we gotta contact him about something." But another thing too is that right now, some of that work like policing is done on a task basis to the students at Camp Johnson. So, you know, it's, you know, they, trash is reported, they contact the people at Johnson, Johnson dispatches a detail when it's available and that. So it really is, for our tourist area, it's gonna be really beneficial for the base.
Yeah, I read through the draft agreement, and it's just important for the public to note and to be said on record, that this is landscaping and groundskeeping, not maintenance of any of the memorials or buildings there, it's just literally the ground.
That's why I asked about the parking lot, figured it's kind of grounds in a way, but-
Same with the bathroom. The bathroom will be owned by the base, and so if there's a problem with the bathroom, just like Parks does now, you know, in many cases, they call facilities and say, "There's a problem here."
Let me ask this, on the bathrooms, when they do come online, who's responsible for making sure they're locked at a certain time?
Well, that's where, well, one, you know, we have a timer system that was built on it, okay? So right now, that's what we'll use, the timer system. You know, what I see personally in the future, if the base is willing for this to happen, you know, we've got fiber access to the grounds, so we could actually put it on a system like we use on our buildings, if that was something. But the other thing too, is coming, is this whole idea of additional police presence at the gardens. And it's gonna be a combination of the police doing patrols, identifying a problem, you know, and us basically helping resolve that problem.
So we will have local control with the police department, they will supersede the MPs?
That's something that's in the works, that the base is, is working on getting a permission from their headquarters to seek concurrent jurisdiction for that piece of the base. And then what'll have to happen is the state will accept that. And then at that point, I mean, we already do courtesy stuff there, it's just what you do when there's a problem, you know, that gets more complicated. All we can really do is tell somebody, "Hey, knock it off, move on."
But if your offender is a civilian forces active duty.
Yep.
Okay.
Michael, this is right in your bill, do you have any question, concerns?
No, we're excited to do this and look forward to the opportunity.
What about personnel for this, this is obviously increasing his workload?
Certainly. We, we're gonna gauge that, you know, initially, his current crew will have to, as he's been doing, will be, you know, absorbing some of those responsibilities, but as you see, there's money in this project for personnel, so we see probably, Michael, in the near future, hiring as many, as many as two individuals is what the projections are for.
Is that going to be for FTEs or temporary seasonal?
Uh, no, they're gonna be FTEs, they won't be seasonal.
But again, on the other hand, you know, we're constantly looking for ways to basically be more efficient. And so, you know, that's why we have an automatically just added people, because one gain a little experience is what it really takes, how much, you know, how frequently you really need to be there and that. And, you know, same thing we've talked about with the ERP. The ERP is gonna free up some man hours from doing some things we do now, and those man hours will be available rather than hiring some new employee.
How much more stress would that put on the police department?
You're talking about if we make a change?
Right.
I would say that's, I wouldn't even bank on that discussion, because in the discussions that we're having now, that's a good ways out, but couldn't guess. Chief gave us the numbers before about the number of calls that we've had on that property.
They're not, calls are, the call volume's not that significant out there at this particular time. I don't know if chief would like to respond to that?
It's one of those things, we don't know what we don't know, because obviously, we don't have primary jurisdiction there. So while we responded very, very frequently, my understanding with the base is their call volume is low as well, but we, I have not received any calls or service volume from their end. And that is something, obviously, we'll take a look at from a need standpoint when we have these conversations on moving into concurrent jurisdiction.
Again, that's, that's gotta go through its own process, and that's where the base would like to be, but there's, there's questions, because the DA's office plays a critical role in this. Because they, their workload too, if our workload ends up with more cases, then there are cases that the DA, DA's office is gonna handle.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
So mayor, the council agrees with my authorization for-
We have a consensus on that, is that what you're looking for?
We want the manager to have the authority to sign the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Anybody want to discuss it, any further? All in favor, signify with saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Mayor, it looks like Mr. Massey did not change the heat at all, so we're gonna keep the temperature really high tonight.
I think it feels good.
That's why the chief's like, "This is too much."
We've gone to another control system, and there's so much control, you get on an individual thing, and I lowered the temperature there, but there's limits on how far, and we've contacted facilities too, to basically make further adjustments.
Keep the chop, of course. Keep the meeting short.
We're on the same page, Mr. Bednar's good. We're just smarter than all that.
Move on to number seven here, this is the Uptown Jacksonville project.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and present to you tonight. It's been quite a while since we've talked about Uptown Jacksonville. As you recall, the last time we were together with the county commissioners, talking about how great the project was, but really, the last time that the council has had any discussion about this was in July, when we went through the plan unit development process, and of course, we really appreciate your support in approving that. So tonight, the format's gonna be a little different than what I've done in the past. What we're gonna do is, we're gonna focus on the different elements of the master plan and where we are with each, okay? Typically, we focus on individual tasks, but what I'm trying to convey with this presentation is that there are a lot of elements in this entire master plan that are moving forward right now, they're just moving forward at different paces and with different steps. So if you're interested, I'm happy to take questions at any time, or we can wait to the end. So the multifamily element of this, it's highlighted in red, of course, you can see it's right there at the end of existing Western Boulevard. This is what we anticipate to be kind of the residential buffer between the single-family units that exist in Williamsburg Plantation, as well as the Main Street, you know, entertainment district concept that we have further to the west. We are seeking private participation in this development, and we posted an RFP on September 2nd, gotten a lot of interest on that thus far. Some good questions came back, had good conversations with some folks who are interested in submitting, and we'll see what the results look like in October.
Are you looking for one developer to do all of it, or are you breaking it up?
Well, it's not specific as to how that would play out, but ideally, we would have one prime developer, but they may choose to sub elements of it out to others. But in reality, when, when some of the questions came in about, can we do this, can we do that, you know, what's the city's preference, really, our preference is high-quality development in accordance with the plan unit development, but then also generating the greatest value to support the project. It's not necessarily to say cash, there may be other ways that a developer can generate value, like in-kind infrastructure construction, you know, that kind of stuff. So I'm really interested to see how creative some of these private developers are and their proposals, and it'll be great to be able to present that to you, hopefully, in early 2026. Now, the selection will occur in November, but that lag time between contract award, you know, between selection and contract award is essentially for us to establish all the terms of the agreement, make sure that all of our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed, and so when we get to contract award in '26, they're ready to then start submitting permits and then hopefully be getting construction shortly thereafter. What I've been telling folks is, this is our entry into the site. This will be the first element of development that we see out there, it's gonna lay the groundwork for the road and really get us a clear path to the other parts of the project that we are most interested in.
So are we gonna put that road in, getting there on developers, are they gonna be mixed, or is it not determined yet?
It's not determined. So, you know, we've talked about infrastructure in lieu of payment, right, in-kind infrastructure. If a developer can go in there and build that road for a reasonable price that, you know, is comparable or less than, you know, purchasing the land, then maybe that works out, you know? But, you know, we are looking to return value. While building that road may be less expensive for them than it would be for us, it has, it still has great value to us, because if we were having, if we were having to build it, then we'd have to issue the contract and all that kind of stuff. So we don't know what we don't know, which is what the chief just said. We're about to find out the come.
What are you asking for in terms of submissions? If I were interested in submitting a submission, what criteria are you looking for?
Well, the basic criteria, at least for the complexion of the project, is the plan unit development. So as you recall, the plan unit development established that area as what we called a mixed multifamily development. It didn't predispose whether it was townhomes, or condos, or, you know, whatever. But what it does is it sets some of the visual criteria, the level of quality that we're looking for. But to answer your question as far as like the actual submittal, you know, we're looking for a lot of background information on the actual developers. We're looking for a pro forma that shows how many units, you know, what type, you know, how many bedrooms, how many people they're looking at, you know, and just a whole variety of things that we would need to consider in order to be able to make-
If I were a developer, what would you be going to attract me to invest in this project?
Well, I'm not sure that we have to do a whole lot, frankly, given the number of phone calls that we've been getting. This project right here has significant interest, and we've had, we've had calls from developers all over the Eastern Seaboard looking to participate in this project.
That overall mixed-use concept, Mr. Bednar, is something that we've talked about in terms of having that live-work-play atmosphere. We hope that, when Anthony gets to the next slide, when we're mixing in that commercial, so that someone has the walkability and the green space and the opportunity to be in this area, hopefully, that's part of the attraction for some of the individuals that would submit those proposals. But then the second part of that is for individuals that wanna be in an active lifestyle. You know, some people say, "We wanna be less active." This is something where, if you wanted to be quiet, I don't think you should live there. And so I think that's kind of that concept of activity in an uptown atmosphere, the hours are different, the entertainment's different, hopefully, that attracts that type of development.
I would think the recreation amenities would be a plus in terms of attracting developers too. Convention center, ball fields, basketball tournaments, what-
Absolutely. Yeah, and I think just the sheer amount of investment that we're planning on making, and the relative security that that's going to happen is very enticing for these folks. In fact, when, when I spoke with a retail recruiter yesterday, she thought this project was amazing. And if they were, you know, if we hired them, of course, to go out and find people to come and build, help build out the Main Street element of this, that there wouldn't be any problems at all, there'd be tons of interest, just because of the high-quality product that we plan here.
How many units are you estimating?
Right now, it's planned for 230, okay? But the way that we phrased it in the proposal is, is that, you know, it can slide left or right depending upon the impacts that it would have on our traffic study. So the traffic study is, and the bar that we've set thus far, that's really the determining factor of how dense we can build things, because we don't wanna overload the roadway system. We're at a very comfortable place based upon the current study, and so we don't wanna deviate too far from that.
How long will those developers have time to actually build? I mean, is that gonna be a phase thing, or is it doing?
All negotiable. I mean, frankly, we didn't put a whole lot of constraints on the developers, other than, here's the master plan, here's the plan unit development, we've already taken care of a lot of your due diligence, you got your zoning, tell us what you would do for us to be able to come, come in here and build this project.
About water and sewer, are you, are you gonna require them to, to upsize, you know, what they might put in for their development wouldn't be adequate for the, for the rest of it? I don't know how, how all that's planned to be flowed or how it's doing, but I just wondered, will that impact them?
Subject to negotiation. You know, what we have right now is we have a conceptual design that demonstrates what the overall infrastructure needs to look like. So diameter of water in, sewer pipes, the lift station that's out there-
So they know that's there.
We have all of that information. Now, whether that's put in on day one or not, I mean, that's subject to negotiation. I would say that it's probably in our best interest to partner with them on doing some of that work, but really, it depends on what the proposals come back as.
You look at it now, how Wally's team operates is, if you're gonna put in a development, and we need to upsize that, then we have the ability to participate in that. So Anthony, this plan is actually, it gives us that flexibility to figure out how we participate, but we wouldn't miss out on the opportunity to say, they're gonna build the large, the main line coming through, and then we're gonna upsize for additional capacity to serve the other areas, so-
We got the same issue with the road too, obviously, you know, what, what a road would take for, for just to do that versus support the whole, whole facility is, if there's an upsize cost, that somebody's gotta pay, so.
I mean, you know, we, we already require developers to extend in accordance with the master plan, so if the abilities are- the master plan, so if the utilities aren't in front of their property, they have to basically extend them. And yeah, we, we negotiate on how much participation, but we're not going to put in anything that doesn't fit the whole development from a utility standpoint.
And part of the beauty on the timeline is, a lot of economic development plans, you want to phase in and say, you need to have X number of units or the project built within three years. You put some type of timeline there. We want something like that inside of our agreement, so that there is, there's the ability to have a clawback if they're not doing it. We'll work through the team to figure out what we can and we can't do. But the whole development depends on each system being able to develop in a similar time span. If you remember, one of the questions that the county asked us was, what's your overall build-out plan? Well, it's all contingent upon each individual segment. The only thing we can control are the things that we're going to build. We want to have the amenities, like Mr. Bittner's talking about. If we're going to have rectangular fields and a convention center and a multi-use complex, we want to have the uptown, we want to have the residential, but we've got to find those partners that show us they're ready to build in their proposals, and they have the capacity to make it happen. So there's a challenge there, but we'll work through that.
What guarantees will we have that the townhomes won't become like some of the other townhomes in town and deteriorate over time and become more renters? What's, what are we thinking on our protection for that?
Well, there's a number of ways that we can do that. Of course, we can put in deed restrictions for the transfer that requires HOAs and maintenance and things of that nature, but, you know, I can't give you a specific answer right now. We left this pretty much wide open to get the creative juices flowing for the private sector to tell, for the, excuse me, for them to tell us what they think the right approach is, and then we'll negotiate from there. That's the great thing about this process. We don't have to micromanage everything, because if we did, I think we would drop away interest.
I think you're going to spend a lot of time, Anthony, to go through these. I'll be surprised if you can make a decision in a month.
Well, we're not intending to make a decision in a month. Early '26 is a very fluffing timeline.
You got to select in November, but I was just, you know, just thinking about all of the what-ifs, and you got to, you got to start thinking, what if, what if this does this, what if that does that? I mean, you have to, you have to come up with your own what-ifs, and that's, there's a lot of what-ifs out there.
There are.
And you're not going to think of every one of them.
We've never done this before.
I know.
So.
Some people have already done this.
But others have.
And you guys vetted it because they've done it.
And in fact, I should have said this to start with, the solicitation that we used was actually taken from another community who's done something very similar and was successful in doing it. So we use that as our template, that set up the basic parameters. Basically, you know, essentially what we're trying to do is start the conversation. Early July '26 would be great. If it takes longer than that, then that's what it'll take.
Anthony, were they even thinking about putting housing on top of the retail space as well or stacking retail?
That's a different location of the master plan, so that's a really good point. This element here is strictly residential.
So if you do have anybody that's interested, tell them to go on the website, pull up the RFP, and go ahead and work on their submission.
So you could actually have a situation where you had a combination of townhomes, condominiums, as well as rental apartments, potentially.
Given the questions that we have received to this point, I think that's what we're going to find. You're going to have different price points, you're going to have different types of residential units.
Mixed is ideal. You want to have varied income levels and different kinds of combinations.
And when you have a rental, rental situation, you better have a strong property management company.
Well, we own title of the land, and so we have the authority to help, you know, set some of those terms as part of the transaction. Now, I'm not sure if we'll get it perfect the right time, but we're going to try our best.
Northwest sore line on schedule to handle this development?
I'm sorry, sir?
The northwest sore line on schedule to handle this development?
I'm not sure about schedule, but that whole project is, is definitely essential, you know, to support this level of density.
Sore normally is.
Yeah.
It's very close to on schedule, Mr. Bittner.
It's very similar to the downtown streetscape that we.
It's right on schedule. Remember how great that was when it opened?
Mr. Penns, I have a question to expand what Councilmember Warden just said about deed restrictions. So if there is a possibility of us thinking about putting a deed restriction on this partial land, is that something that needs to be part of our UDO moving forward? Because how do we legislate or say a deed restriction can be assigned to one area of housing and not assign to another area? Because it will give the impression.
Sure.
That it's not consistent and across the board, and why does one area receive a deed restriction and another area does not?
Well, I think the short answer to that question is, you know, the owner is the only person or persons that is able to put a deed restriction on, on the property. So we couldn't really require those through the UDO process. What we can do with the UDO is just make sure that we're establishing basic standards that give us a quality development that's going to last over time. Because we're the owner of record here, we can go that step further. And in fact, we've done that before. You recall, we talked about deed restrictions a little bit when we did the, the business park development. Yeah, some of the deed restrictions were a little too restrictive. We had to loosen them up so that we could actually get development to occur. Excuse me. But, but I'll mention that the UDO, reviewing the UDO in total, you know, and making sure that we're comfortable with all those types of provisions, that's something that's ongoing right now.
Because if we go back in time and remember with the federal housing authority, FHA, how people of color wasn't allowed to move in certain neighborhoods because there was deed restrictions. Just saying.
That's definitely, that's not something that we're looking at here, for sure. So any other questions on the multifamily? Again, we've gotten really good interest. I think that there are a lot of unknowns right now. It'll become clearer as we move along, but we do have some high-quality folks very much interested in, in working with us on this.
That's good to hear.
So moving on to the commercial recreation area, this is the fun, one of the fun spots. This is where hopefully we're going to end up with a water park, or a top golf, or, you know, something that we can take the kids to or the family and just have fun for the afternoon. A total acreage of 16, you can see it circled there in red. This is the next step, and part of that driver is because there's an IAAP Expo coming up in November. Now, don't ask me what that stands for, because I don't remember, but this is where all of the amusement park folks get together and share their wares, whether they're water parks, or, you know, just all the folks that are involved in commercial type of recreation and entertainment. So our intent is to put together another, put together another RFP, post it early November, and then go to that expo and physically sell it, you know, to potential investors. And our, our property manager, Venue Works, who we selected earlier this year, they're going to go with us, and they're going to actively help sell it, so that hopefully we can end up with some really quality development there. Amenities that many people from this community leave to go other places and enjoy, whether that's Myrtle Beach, Raleigh, Wilmington, et cetera. So we're trying to dovetail this with what we're doing with the multifamily. So submissions will be sometime in February, and then contract award in spring, probably spring to summer of '26, assuming everything goes well. But there's been interest in this as well. We've gotten phone calls from people who are interested in building water parks in our area. So, yeah, I'm going to keep reinforcing that. What we're talking about here is very reasonable, very, very attainable. We just have to do it in the right way and in the right sequence.
Looks like, looks like we're not going to take all 20 years to, to build this out.
I certainly hope not.
That's what we talked about when we first started talking about it way back when.
Well, it's going to take some time, but 20 years.
Yeah, that is, yeah, this is definitely much more fast-paced than, than the commons.
So let's keep moving here. The Main Street mixed-use element, Mr. Jackson, this is what you were referring to earlier. So this is what I call the Mayfair-type concept, where, you know, you've got a commercial office on the first floor, and then above you have residential. We know, given that our soil types are what they are, we're probably not going any higher than, say, three stories. But, you know, that's still really good density, and it's within the, the limits that we've established for our traffic study. I mentioned to you before that I was talking with essentially what's a retail headhunter. It's not the, the individual that we would like to work with, but we do have a firm that we're negotiating with right now called Retail Strategies, okay? And their whole purpose is to come in, evaluate a project, evaluate a community, give us the analytics that will help us to determine what's the best fit for this site, to help us develop the marketing material to chase those leads, and then for them to go out and actually do it. So this is very important, because I don't feel like this mixed-use area is going to develop as one unit, like the townhomes or the commercial recreation. We're probably going to have a series of projects, particularly because developing things like hotels, you know, and things like that, it's a lot different than developing, you know, commercial residential combination-type buildings, so. But these folks have an excellent reputation throughout North Carolina. I know, Josh, you've worked with them before in other communities, but they, they seem to bring a great pedigree and a great rolodex at the same time. During the plan unit development process, there are questions about the roadway improvements, and one of the, the statements that I made during that process was that we're probably going to have to look at accepting a portion of Western Boulevard for maintenance. That would be the section between Gomerant Road and Oleham Street. So it's the residential portion kind of west of, of Lowes Food. The reason is, well, there's multiple reasons, but the main reason is, is we can control our own destiny, okay? So if, if that road remains in DOT ownership, then we have to go through all the DOT processes. We have to follow the DOT timelines, meet the DOT standards.
20 years.
And unfortunately, that's really not going to meet our needs. You know, DOT is a great partner, and they do an excellent job moving traffic, but in this particular case, what we're trying to do is to create a place, right? Not only functions, but it, it, it looks good, right? And it's designed with a certain intent in mind, which isn't necessarily moving cars at 55 miles an hour. So leaving it in their ownership and maintenance is going to delay the process. It'll also probably increase our cost when we go to make improvements. And some of the things that we propose, like the traffic signals and things of that nature, it would be a challenge for us to get them to support that.
If we keep it as a city, we can put our own traffic signalization up. We don't have to get a stoplight warrant like we'd like to normally do.
We can control our own destiny. Yeah. Now, the study did conduct signal warrants, because you really want to do that, to make sure that they're appropriate to be installed. But we can make them look the way that we want them to when they're, when they're constructed. You know, we can design the road to a different standard, so it's maybe not like a freeway. And we would, we would be able to use the right-of-way out there, which is 200 feet, right? We'd be able to use that in different ways as well.
DOT is pretty much ruled out, ever extended that.
Unfortunately, that project died many years ago, and, and the reason was because the, the total cost just for the bridge was around $200 million, and that was in 2008. So I have no idea what it would cost now, but it's super scary. That facility was actually moved, the plan is changed, and the MPO voted to move that, that crossing up to Ramsey Road to connect over to 111 and 258 on the other side of the road.
So you're just going to create a nightmare somewhere else.
There's, there's my 20 years.
There's, there's going to be a lot of traffic involved, but I'll tell you that the cost is probably less than half, which is what our intent was.
So what's the cost on the road improvement, ballpark?
The road improvement for the project?
If we're going to do the road?
Well, we're still in process on that right now. We're working on the cost estimates. I wish I had a better answer for you, but we're working on that now.
That was included in the original estimate.
NC DOT is not immune to political pressure. I wouldn't give up on it.
Stay tuned. Well, we can talk about that more when we bring forward the request and decide which way to go. The one thing that I'll tell you is that they have become more of an immovable object as of lately, and so we, we do struggle with that influence a little bit, but, you know, we'll, we'll talk more about that when we get there, and we'll have more on the cost as well. Something that we've learned a lot about, of course, this doesn't have to do with a specific element of the project. Initially, when we talked about, you know, things like game rooms and food and beverage, the thought was kind of to minimize that, because it's not something that we do as a government. The challenge with that is, is that's where all the money is made. And so now that we have Venue Works on board, you know, they've given us an insider's look as to how do these get privately funded and actually make money? Well, this is how you do it, okay? And so what I'm showing you here are two performers that were created for both the concessions and dining piece, as well as the arcade. And those numbers right there are estimated at year three, you know, because there's recovery of cost upfront in years one through, one to, one and two. But we're looking at a net potentially, and these are conservative of 1.5 million from the food and beverage of the, of the facility. From the arcade, half a million dollars. And so we will have to make a decision at some point in the future. Doesn't need to be today, but the question is, do we want to include these elements in the building? There will be an additional cost, but frankly, this is how we drive down the operating expense for the building. And you see where it says reduced management fee there. One of the reasons that we selected Venue Works is because even though they have a fixed annual fee for us to pay them to be here in a managed facility, a lot of their revenue is generated off of food and beverage. So it's performance-based, okay? The more money we generate off of food and beverage, the lower that fixed management fee goes. And so essentially, you know, the management of the facility ends up kind of paying for itself, whereas when we originally looked at it with, with the Victus study, we thought it was going to cost us a half million dollars a year at least just to pay for the management. But in this case, it could drive it down significantly. So that's a long-term consideration.
Yeah, the interesting part here is when we started this dialogue, if you recall, we were talking to the county a couple weeks ago, one of the things we were pushing is, we brought in the experts to tell us how to do this, because just like with the housing and the development, it's not something that we do. And so in local government, we've had some great discussions with our team going around the table about, well, you know, we don't need to have a restaurant inside, because there are going to be restaurants outside. We want people to go and spend their money there. That's just ignorance on our part, because when the, when the experts come in and they talk about facility management, they talk about all the dollars from these people sitting at the top watching hockey, which we're not going to have hockey, but they're sitting there spending while they're active with the sport. And then this concept of an arcade, we've talked about a David Buster's type of a concept, saying, well, if we have that outside in the uptown area, then the kids and the families will go there. Well, then we get our, our contractor comes in and gives us the numbers and shows the return on investment, and then the annual numbers to offset operations. on investment and then the annual numbers to offset operations. And again, we were just wrong. I mean, our genius concepts here, we were trying to make sure we didn't build extra inside so that the building costs weren't too expensive to get us to a number we could handle. But these guys brought in their intelligence and their multiple-site management experience, and they showed us numbers. And then when Anthony brought it to us, it's just incredible to see how bringing in the professionals help us do something that's gonna be an awesome experience for people. And that's part of that dialogue that we gave to the county. It's that experience that's gonna make it special.
What other cities has Venue Works, you know, working in North Carolina?
Well, they're mostly out of the Midwest right now, and I'd have to look all of that up and give it to you accurately. But they're moving into the South. There are a number of facilities I think that they have in Mississippi and Louisiana. And, you know, we would be their first footprint in North Carolina, but given all the growth in the state, you know, they see this as basically a foothold for them to grow into this market. But back to the point that Josh was making, the reason that we're able to make this decision is because the council allowed us to lean forward and hire the business experts to come in and advise us before we finalize the design. Other communities that have built these in the past didn't do that, and so they're missing out on this. And one thing that we keep hearing over and over and over and over, when we visit different facilities and talk to experts and event coordinators, it's all about the experience, right? If you don't have a positive experience, if you're out in the middle of nowhere, right? Not around hotels, not around restaurants, if you don't provide things like this, then there's less of a probability of return, so.
These days, people choose where they go and what they do based on that experience, and will pay premium for experience. Experience is what it's about. It's not the basics anymore. It's the add-ons, and they're premium.
And that's what we've learned in talking to experts, so. Okay, rectangular fields. No question, this is part of the program, but what we've learned over time is that maybe artificial turf wasn't such a bad thing to consider, okay? And I see Michael back in the background there shaking his head. So frankly, when we started this process, I think pretty much everybody in the room was convinced natural grass is where it's at. Practically, that is the worst decision we could make.
It's one of those things. It's incredible to see how the practical application is different than what we've done in our experiences, either with our kids or ourselves, to say, "Hey, we think this is the way we should go." And then based on this expert experience, they've just given us a pathway to see more clearly how that's just not the plan.
And literally, we went and saw and touched and learned for an extensive period of time. And so, you know, the information we're bringing you is very well embedded. The recommendation at this point, and you'll hear this more as we go towards construction, is that we consider eight artificial turf fields for the initial investment. And then Phase Two, you know, whether that's part of the initial construction or not, I would say likely not, would be a natural grass championship field. So with the turf fields, you can use them 24/7, 365 for years and years and years at a time, and they look like brand new. There's very minimal maintenance. There's a slight increase in the overall capital cost, but that is way overshadowed by the long-term maintenance of grass. And also, the fact is, is that there's a ton of downtime with grass. When it's raining, when it needs to recover. I mean, the case was very soundly made that grass is not a good idea on the fields that you want to use every day.
There used to be a lot of injuries with turf. Has that turf changed over the years?
The answer is yes. The technology has come around, and that's why we actually went and saw and touched. So, you know, things like impact, you know, they have padded systems now that prevent the hard hits, you know, that occurred in the past. There were issues with heat, you know, how much heat it generated. But the material that they use now to basically infill the turf helps cut the heat down significantly. And then there were also chemical concerns, right? That was many years ago, like when the NFL started using turf. All of that has been resolved. They use a lot of organic materials for the infill. It's low cost, so it's really the best option, particularly now that the laws have changed so that we don't have to manage stormwater associated with artificial turf. Prior to those laws changing, we would have to have a pond for all the runoff. Now, as far as the championship field, the reason that we would recommend that is, excuse me, is Phase Two, is because, you know, once we're able to generate some synergy outside, we really would like to have a corporate sponsor to help us build that, okay? And this is a capital investment that we feel needs a lot of special attention itself, that we're not able to provide to it right now. So initially, the thought is, build the eight, leave that middle section as like an event lawn, you know? We're not gonna maintain that like a golf course, right, Michael?
Right.
But it's gonna be an area, it's gonna be an area where people can gather and a lot of the event kind of coordination can occur to help support the rectangular fields. So I just can't convey enough to you how much we're learning. This was kind of a surprise to me. Out of the blue, we got a phone call, or actually an email from a business development person with the Opry Entertainment Group, and they're the ones that own all the brands that you see right here on the screen, of course, some pretty big ones. They're interested in talking to us about the amphitheater. Now, at this point, the amphitheater is kind of a future phase, if you will, because we've got other things to pay attention to. But they're interested in sending and providing us with a proposal on how we might be able to partner on the amphitheater. This is a new market for them. You know, this is a new part of their business model, and they seem very excited. So hopefully, within the next several weeks, we'll be able to hear more about what they're talking about.
With the new amphitheater, will we change what's in the Commons right now?
That's a decision that we're gonna have to make. I'm not sure if we would change it. It may just adjust the amount of investment that we make in that amphitheater. But there's more discussion on that to be had, especially if we get a partner and have the ability to accelerate.
Still might do a little local bands back in there. It's fairly economical.
Smaller venue.
Yeah, small venue.
Part of the beauty of that is you look at the concept that Susan's team's been working on with the Summer Concert Series, and now the TDA has purchased the new stage that we used at Rock the Block, and you have that flexibility to host events throughout the city. So think about a real, a larger music festival that could have three or four different sites around the community. I mean, you could have people going all different directions during the weekend. That's right. So there's a lot of opportunity for us to maximize utility of those existing spaces, just for creating those spaces where people want to be.
So this was unsolicited, which, I mean, again, you know, it just demonstrates the merit of what we put together with the master plan.
There was a group out of Charlotte that was brought up a while back, too.
I had another one call me this morning. You know, I mean, people are coming out of the woodwork now that they see how great the project is.
Yeah, hopefully, these will be the same as your comment, Mr. Bittner, where the overall utility of the site will attract some of these partners just like this. And then the partners that we have, they work with some other individuals, and they're trying to gain some of that interest, some of that energy. I'm hoping this one's same kind of thing. They'll talk to somebody, and it's either a project they want to do or they know somebody else that'd be interested in it. That's how Wilmington came into the Live Nation series, is when they put out their ad, Live Nation stepped up and took both of those sites. So they have the, well, they're both on water, but they have the larger facility and then the smaller facility, and similar, we could have some of that same opportunity here.
Okay, last slide, next steps. So, Mr. Bittner, we're working on the cost estimates, and as soon as we're comfortable with those, we'll be coming back to talk about that. But we also want to spend some time talking about implementation, especially the construction manager at risk approach. That's something we've never done before as a city. Many other communities have done it, but this is probably our best bet to make sure that we can manage this large, complex project and also control costs. So I'm not gonna get too deep, I'm not gonna get deep into this concept today, but we will be coming back with the design team to talk more about the pros and cons and how we would go about doing that. We also need to move forward with Phase Three of the design contract. I'm not gonna kid you on this one. This is going to be the big one. This is the one that gets us to design drawings so that we can go out there and build. So we're hoping to start that process by the end of the year. And then once we're able to make some of those decisions, we can really kind of tighten up the phasing approach as well as the implementation schedule. So that's all I have for you, Mayor.
Has there been any solicitation for naming rights on anything as of yet?
Not at this point. I mean, other than what we talked to the county commission about. But, you know, I think once we get a little bit further along in the process, what has been done is Victus has entered a marketing and naming rights package. You know, so it basically gives us a laundry list of options and potential revenue generation. But we haven't exercised any of that yet.
Do you know anybody that brings a big check? Just send them in, and we'll name a facility after them.
Comfortable City Center.
The Comfortable City Center has a ring to it. I bet their marketing slogan guy can really work.
Get a good deal on it.
Rich Uncle Bob.
Name a year. I got a right here. I'm gonna name a year.
That's as far as that goes.
We're still in conversation with our counterparts, also the county. Mr. Ray and I met with the county manager and the county chair last week, and had a discussion. Also, the chairman bought a letter, listed several questions that they had from their commission that our staff is now working on a response for them. And when they finish their review of those questions, I'll submit a letter back to the chair so he can share with his fellow commissioners over there. At some point in time, we'll discuss all of that. But for now, I mean, this must have been about 10 different things, 10 different questions. If you know, that night that we were there, there were questions they had anyway.
Sure.
To answer.
Due diligence is important, so.
We're working on it now, Mayor, and we'll have it back to you soon.
I think there's still, there's interest there, and there's good reason for that because, you know, this means a lot as far as tax revenue for them, if it's successful, so. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
And for all the work behind the others. It's a lot.
And all the work you've got left in front of you. So with that, that concludes our business. Other than a closed session to discuss the development update and some land. We can do it now.
We do it now, Mayor?
We've got one, yeah.
I do, please, sir.
Also mentioned about any other this weekend. Is it this weekend?
Yes, sir. Since Mr. Warden brought this one up, we'll go first to Rock the Block. We talked about the stage. We talked about all the people, the vendors, the energy that we had for the event. This was our grand reopening of New Bridge Street, and it couldn't have been, it couldn't have had a better turnout. It couldn't have had a better, a couple of bands that were on stage. People stayed here till well after the nine o'clock hour, and we said, "Hey, we need to close the ship down." Started about five o'clock. Vendors all the way up and down the road, food trucks all the way down. If you thought about it, it was probably there. Kudos to recreation and the parks and the police and fire. So many different members of our teams that were active throughout the night to make sure that the event went on literally without a hitch. You know, a lot of us were staring up in the skies to see if it was gonna rain, and the good Lord decided it was good through the end. And so I think that was, it was fantastic. This right here, if you look at, this is the Bistro and to one of our boutique stores. The number of people going in and out of these businesses in their early openings, their early days is incredible. They couldn't imagine better days when you're talking to them. Just the number of people going in to look around, to buy things. Just fantastic overall event. The activities, just being engaged for people of all ages, just overall positive experience. You see DC Hayes here driving around, making sure that it looks like Scott didn't get sick or injured. And so if he needed something, they were gonna pick Scott up and drive him to wherever he needed to go. So they were on one-on-one detail for him the whole night. But overall, the businesses had great turnout. Shirley said they had some, they had one of their best days ever with people coming in and out and being active for downtown. Just seeing Boomtown, the sign downtown, that's phenomenal. That's the impact we want to have. Now, our only challenge is, people want to do events every week. And last time I checked with the teams, it does take a large number of staff to make it happen. This right here is Elijah Harris. He's one of our firefighters. He was the opening act for the show and put on an excellent start to Rock the Block for us. And I think he was a late ad, but he went to the All-America Cities with us and decided he wanted to do a little bit of singing. A little bit of singing turned into an hour on the microphone. About 30 minutes of storytelling. It was very good. Elijah's very talented. So you see our people out and about. Plenty of community partners having a good time. I look forward to the next event and each one after. We do have Winterfest coming up. So Winterfest typically happens at the Riverwalk area, but maybe we'll be able to connect New Bridge with Riverwalk, and we'll have a larger festival in the area. That's December 6th, I believe. Winterfest is December 6th, so make sure that's already on your calendar.
National Night Out, right now scheduled for Saturday.
National Night Out is this Saturday. So when people ask, "What's our next event?" Tell them. National Night Out is our huge event here in the city. It's the biggest event we have annually, and it's gonna be at the Commons Saturday, and it starts at 4:30. So change of venue. It's on a Saturday, so you don't have any real excuses why you're not there. Weather's gonna be fantastic, just like Rock the Block. Come check it out. Bicycle giveaways, fireworks, games, vendors. It's free admission. I think that's the best part. You can just come out and have a good time and enjoy the evening. So that's Saturday at the Commons. We did have International Coffee with a Cop at Wawa. Wawa's our new local meeting space. So if you haven't been to Wawa yet, remember, this is just Wawa one. Be ready for Wawa two, three, and four in the future. You're gonna have plenty of opportunities to come out and about. But they hosted Coffee with a Cop. We have Officer Rutter with muggles there. And then at some point, we also have DC Dorn and DC Weaver, and then we had Rutter, Jones, Ford, and Silence, all in the mix. There we go. There are those people. That's a short timer there that DC Dorn fell. Word on the street is, he's not gonna work much longer, so. But he was there Coffee with a Cop because that's what we do. The beauty here is, local partner hosting an event so that people could come out and engage with our police officers. Fantastic response for both police and for community members. We also had our Faith in Blue BBQ at Living Hope Church. Once again, you see our police officers, that's Guzman there, but you see our police officers hanging out with Eagles fans. So it just shows there's compassion. Looks like he's attempting to arrest her for being an Eagles fan. It's real tough, but another active time where we've got engagement and our police officers, food, family, and fun, and inflatables. It can't get much better than this. Our police department has been extremely active at multiple events now in and around town. Here you go, more of our officers there, and the grill is open for business. There you go, Mayor. That's what I have. I will remind this mayor council, Monday we do have our FY26 post-budget retreat at, we start promptly at eight o'clock Monday morning. We'll make sure to send a message and reminder out to you tomorrow-ish again, maybe. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Motion for a closed session.
Second?
All right. All right. Close. Okay.